Thank you. I hope you're all in the right room tonight. We're going to be hearing the candidates for the San Bruno City Council. I want to thank Carol for making the arrangements to make this evening possible. And just to let you know, if you don't already, who we are. We're a national organization, nonpartisan, and we work to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in the government. We are absolutely nonpartisan. We have no for or against any of the candidates in any of the races in any other country. So I don't, I just met these men tonight and have no vested interest whether one or the other wins. And that's what we do in every district we go to, whether it's school boards, or city council, or mosquito abatement, or whatever. We're here as sort of a sounding board and help to make you, help you make your mind up what you want to do. So the purpose of these candidates' nights is for you to hear what they have to say. So when we have questions, we often have done it standing up and asking them. We sometimes get speeches, but that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for you to find out what they think about different issues. We started out here, first, let me tell you, this is the office to be filled for the city council. There's four vacancies, as you see, four candidates, but there's only two that are to be filled for this time. And the other three, as there's five on it, will be up for election in another two years. I'd like to introduce the men up here. Because we have two people with the same last name, they both decided they'd like to be called by their first name. We're usually much more formal. And the other two decided to follow suit. So we're going to be very informal tonight, and we're going to be talking about Marty, and Ken, and Rico, and Andrew. And if you want their last names, they're up there for you as well. We chose the, we chose the order of speaking by just pulling numbers out of the hat, or out of an envelope, I should say. And so the person that will go first will go last, and so forth with the other, with all four people. I don't need to make any excuses for people that didn't show up, because they're all here. Tuesday, November 5th, the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, is Election Day. And so you want to be sure to get out now that you will have heard these candidates, you want to vote for two of them anyway. We start out by each one giving a three-minute talk on anything he wants to say. We have not asked him to cover any particular subjects, and it's totally up to them, whatever they cover. In the wrap-up, at the end of the evening, they'll each have two minutes. And as I mentioned, that'll be in the reverse order that we picked for speaking. And again, they will be free to say whatever they want, either a prepared speech, or something that maybe will have come out of the discussion this evening. And we will have a question period. So first, they're going to give their three-minute talk, they'll go through all of them, then we'll open it up for questions, and at that time, we'll talk about how we'll do that. And then at the end, we'll wrap it up. We are scheduled to be done by 8:15. We don't have to stay all that time, if you've had all your questions answered earlier, but we will stay until that time. So what I'd like to do is start with our first candidate here, who is Andrew Mason.
Hello, everyone. How's everyone doing? Is this mic doing good? Yeah? Okay. My name's Andrew T. Mason. I've worked in San Mateo County for 14 years in biotechnology. My wife and I have finally been able to buy a house here in San Bruno, after commuting across the Bay Bridge for 14 years. We love San Bruno. It's a beautiful town. It has an old-school charm to it. It has a lot of history. And it's also blessed with a proximity near a lot of, like, high-tech biotech companies. My main goals are simple. One, I want to curb utilities costs. I don't think that we should be voting to increase utilities costs, as far as water, garbage, sewer, ecology, the whole kit and caboodle of utilities. I think because primarily this community, there's a large contingent of retired folks, folks on limited income, folks that have paid in, paid taxes into this society for a long time. And to tax them via a utility tax increase, whether yearly, quarterly, whatnot, is, I really think it goes against where we want to be as a town. The second thing I want to talk about is local job creation. So I think, because based in working in biotechnology, I think that we need to focus on those industries, the clean industries. If you look at, say, South San Francisco, that used to have a beef tannery 80 years ago, at the end of Oyster Point. And the EPA and us, as citizens of small towns, have gotten together and said, "We want cleaner air and cleaner water, and we want better jobs, and more sustainable jobs." And I think that that's critical. And where San Bruno's going to be 10, 20 years down the line, we need to align job creation with those sorts of industries. The third thing, again, if I'm elected, I want to partner with the San Bruno Park School District. I think, thank you. The critical thing is focusing the educational efforts around science and math and technology. I think that we're being eclipsed in some way in those areas, just as a society. But I think if I'm elected in San Bruno, and I love this town, I'm going to do my best to improve the schools. And I will partner with the local school districts. So, thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to say a couple of things before Andrew began. I wanted to introduce our timekeeper. Maybe you would stand for just a moment, Jean, or just raise your hand. And she's a very important person. This man wonderfully ended before three minutes, but he had three minutes. And if he had talked longer, she would have put up a one-minute warning to him that he had a minute left, and then 30 seconds, so that he needed to wrap up. And people are always very good about closing in the allotted time. I also'd like to introduce Mary, who's very diligently looking at all these cards that have been turned in. And if any of you want more of them, you can get them from Bonnie, and you can write some questions. Many of them are on the same subject, and what she's doing is kind of putting like ones together, like, there'll probably be a couple of questions on the utilities, and something else on, you know, another issue that comes up, so that there won't be repetitious of the same question many times. So those are the couple of things that I did forget to mention. And I guess the next person up, number two, is Marty.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Marty Medina, and I first want to thank the League of Women Voters and the City of San Bruno for hosting this important event. And I wanted to thank my lovely fiancee, Jeanette, and our son Max, who's outside, not making too much noise right now, for their love and support. I'm sure everyone here tonight is in favor of increased public safety, better senior services, community services, parks, better schools, improving the local economy, and balancing the budget. That's the basic function of local government. San Bruno turns 100 years next year. A time to remember the good old days, a time to envision the future. A future where extensive and costly maintenance and repairs is, are needed on our aging city's infrastructure. For 11 years, I worked for you as a Public Works Inspector. I believe our city can substantially improve delivering effective and cost-efficient construction projects. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We need to be innovative, cross-train our labor force, and embrace technology. We must change to survive, and we need to start at the top. That's why I believe it is essential to elect a council member with construction, management knowledge, and experience. I am the only candidate that possesses this skill set, and has the relevant experience to assess the needs of our streets, our sidewalks, our sewers, and our water systems. Furthermore, this year, I am proud to have completed my Construction Management Certificate from UC Berkeley Extension. Our trust in the city council has been costly. San Bruno was sued by the state of California and paid over $910,000 in fines in June, I'm sorry, in July 2011. Furthermore, the city verified it failed to collect over $650,000 in sewer and water bills from 2008 to 2012. This total is $1.5 million. This amount of money is inexcusable, regardless of what anybody says here tonight. Sadly, we are stuck paying for it, because on May 8th, 2012, the city council increased our sewer and water rates another 10% for five consecutive years. And the garbage rates were also increased. With the same policies, procedures, personnel, and council, what's likely to happen in the future? Increased rates. Because they can never spend enough of our money to fix the problem. Seniors on fixed incomes, families struggling to make ends meet, those most vulnerable in this shaky economy cannot afford another four years with this council. With respect, I ask for your vote, so I can propose to suspend the rate increases. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Rico Medina.
Good evening. Just for any of those that may not already know a little bit about me, I am very proud to say that I call San Bruno home, and have for my entire life. My grandparents, my mother, I have history in this city, and I do know quite a bit about it, and have been engaged in one form or another for over 32 years of volunteering on committee commissions and boards, trying to make a difference, each time leaving things better, hopefully, than I started, or it began. And that could be from the graffiti ordinance that the Crime Prevention Committee that I served on passed. It could be when on the Parks and Recreation Commission, when we helped make improvements to our city parks. So if those that have been here a long time in the town remember what our city park was like before the red zones and the drinking that occurred, that brought not a good representation to our town. It's also one of the things that I find most rewarding in this community, is being able to go out there and assist, and be available, being the eyes, ears, and voice, whether it's about a situation at the home, in the neighborhood, or in the community as a whole. Just last night, at the Taste of San Bruno, one of the most satisfying experiences is having a gentleman coming up and saying, "Thank you for being engaged. Thank you for making a difference in my neighborhood." That the parents now and the children are playing on the street and feeling safer in their community. That's why I've ran for office. That's why I continue to want to serve as your council member. There's always, as we have indicated, 100 anniversaries coming. It's impressive to look upon what this city has done, where it has come, and where it is going. We have been, not too many years ago, tested as a community. And I'm proud to say that with the resolve and the courage of its residents and its community, we band it together. And at any time, at any opportunity that arises, this community stands strong, and that is why it's known as the city with the heart. We, and I, look forward to this evening, getting the tough questions, trying to understand where each of us reside. I also believe it's important, as far as us being engaged with the schools, and that's why I have done that. Not only just with the schools, but across the board, with various organizations, keeping myself involved and engaged in this community, and being available. This town, and everybody in it, has helped me along the way, made me the better person that I am, and the stronger man that you see before you. And I want to continue on to give back to the community that is given to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last one, Mr. Ken Ibarra.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Ken Ibarra. I'm a 36-year resident of San Bruno, and I've run my architecture business in San Bruno for over 30 years. I have two adult daughters, who were raised in San Bruno, and for the last 15 years, I've lived with my partner, Amy, and her two sons. I've had the honor and privilege to serve on the San Bruno City Council since 1996. I've been fortunate to serve on a council with very dedicated individuals, like my current colleagues, and also work with an equally dedicated city staff for the last 17 years. I'm proud of the many accomplishments that we have achieved, to name a few. I co-chaired the youth committee that established an after-school daycare program in the public schools, when none had existed. Followed by the creation of a summer day camp program for our youth, when none had existed. In 1999, we unanimously approved redevelopment, which helped fund construction, reconstruction of the shops at Tan Fran, downtown improvements, and the crossings development, which has provided over 1,000 residential units, including senior and affordable housing, a retail center featuring the popular Jack's Restaurant, and a hotel with meeting and banquet facilities soon to break ground. We have spent millions of dollars replacing and upgrading our water, sewer, and stormwater systems, systems that are 60 to 100 years old, that used to produce annual flooding and service disruptions. We upgraded our parks and replaced all playground equipment. We implemented the sidewalk repair and street resurfacing programs, and will soon be starting a citywide street light improvement program. I co-chaired the effort to build the Caltrain overpass and station at San Bruno Avenue, which will soon be completed. I co-chaired the creation and adoption of the Transit Quarters Plan, which will provide a guide for well-planned development along El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue, and the downtown. We have maintained a high level of city services and provided balanced budgets while enduring over 10 years of economic challenges, including a major recession. And during this tenure, I've been active in our community. I'm a member of St. Roberts Parish. I coached San Bruno Girls softball for eight years. I served on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I volunteered at the senior center. I'm an active member of the San Bruno Lions Club, and even chaired the Posey Parade. And in 2010, I joined the fight against cancer with Relay for Life San Bruno, currently serving my second year as chairman. I am very passionate about San Bruno, and want to provide what's best for all. No one cares more about this community than I do. I have been dedicated and committed to improve and enhance San Bruno, both today and in the future. I have served on a city council that works hard to get things done, and I want to continue our success for another term. I ask that you re-elect Ken Ibarra. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start the question period now, and we've actually had, looks like about 15 questions already. It's just about as many as you here. And what we're going to do is, if the question is directed specifically at a candidate, he will have the opportunity to answer it first, or they will. But, and then the others may comment as they wish. They don't have to feel obligated, but they're quite welcome to. And we've had several on the utility issue that was raised by a couple of the candidates. And this is to the challengers, so the two of you who are not incumbents. You've campaigned to lower utility rates, water sewer rates. How do you propose to do this? And how do you propose to lower these rates and pay for the needed system improvements? So which one of you, Andrew, or?
Marty.
Marty.
Sure, I'm ready. We have to do things fundamentally differently. Currently, in San Bruno, we have a water department, we have a sewer department, we have a street department. They don't mix. Water doesn't work on sewer, sewer doesn't work on streets, streets doesn't work on sewer, water. We need to use different materials. Currently, I work for Alameda County Water District. They serve 331,000 people. They use PVC pipe instead of ductile iron pipe. PVC pipe costs half what it costs for ductile iron pipe. So we need to use different materials. I mentioned earlier about how the city's not collecting water and sewer bills for $650,000. We need to stop that immediately, and that money can be applied and turned back in to reduce our water rates, our sewer rates.
Thank you. Andrew?
I agree with Marty in this. He and I spoke at great length about this. The key with, where Marty and I agree particularly, is technology. So because I work in the private industry, we've increased a lot of efficiencies based on water usage. So, you know, if you refine your process, or use different materials like PVC or whatnot, you can save a lot of costs. And we need to rethink the process differently. I don't think that, I don't think raising rates is the way to go. I don't think that that's really effectively at any cost. I know that the incumbents mentioned, hey, upgrades, this is a 100-year-old city. I understand that. But the key is, you've got to embrace technology, you've got to do it now, and you've got to, you've got to train people in a new way. You can't just have the same management, the same practices, the same SOPs and protocols, and get the same results. And also, I mean, it comes down to what the voters want. The voters want lowered utilities, or stopped the increases. So, thank you.
Do the other two of you want to comment on that question? Okay.
I came on the city council in 1996, and one of the first tasks we did was to do a water and wastewater master plan. I looked to my colleague, Irene O'Connell. She wanted to take care of the city underground. We took care of a city that, that at that time was 80 years old, and we started taking care of it. To not, to ignore that is meaning to dig up the city, water pipes bursting, my own street on Hazel Avenue, almost weekly, there was something going wrong with the system. We have a cease and desist order. Even though we don't, we don't have control over the wastewater program in South San Francisco, we have to take care of it. We have an old system, and we have to take care of it. The guidelines of the state are getting stricter and stricter every year, and so we have to pay to upgrade. Unfortunately, it means that the rate payers have to pay more. When you look at, you look at the rates, we are not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're in the middle.
Yeah.
Very quickly, I just wanted to say that when we're talking about the collections, for example, let's say sewer, when the city goes ahead and gets in between 10 and 12 million dollars in revenues, and it allocates about 1%, which is the normal utility that you budget in for write-offs, for bad debt, that's what happens in private business everywhere. We collect 99% of those monies that are billed out. And in essence, that the average is 1%, and we do below that. So we collect 99 point something per year. So of course, every time, you can, you can clump it together over a five-year period and have a number, but the bottom line is, 99% is collected.
Can we get a, add any of that?
No, I think what you need to do is make a little note of things you want to address, and then you could kind of hit those at the end.
Okay, will do.
And you might have an opportunity with some other question.
Sure.
To, to get into that. There are several questions here, and actually mentioned by a few of the candidates, about the collaboration between schools and the city council. And basically, they're asking, what, what would you propose? It's been said they need, you need to improve the relationship, and how would that relationship be improved? And that's open to all of you. Want to go ahead?
Great question. I love that question. I've been waiting for that all, all evening. Essentially, because I work in, in biotechnology science industry, I know a lot of research scientists and engineers that would love to come talk to public schools, and they'd love to improve public schools, and create, my vision would be create a little bit of a, kind of a focus group, where someone from industry who's been successful, it is studying a certain application, a certain engineering, chemical engineering, or process science, or whatnot, they can come and talk to public school education students, and say, "This is the application for the real world. It's not just you're studying algebra. It's, you're studying this because it actually has a real-world application." And I think that's going to speak volumes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Should we just go down the line?
As far as the involvement, again, is, or is the schools, I have done that. We meet on a quarterly basis with a subcommittee of both the city and the school district, and we did that when I took office, so that we could collaborate and keep each other appraised of what's going on, and resolve issues at hand that face all of us. Because in essence, it's two elected bodies, but it is one community. And so in essence, we do need to work hand-in-hand. And I know I've just been asked to serve by the superintendent and the school board on a subcommittee to help prepare and plan for their future. So there are opportunities for each one of us, whether we're on this council, or we're out in the community, to be engaged, and be involved, and make a difference to our kids' education.
Ken?
I too been waiting for this question, Mike. As mentioned, as mentioned previously, I have helped our families by creating an after-school program in our public schools to help working parents. In addition, we created the summer day camp program, because Milbrae was the only provider at the time. We've been proactive in partnering with the school district to provide after-school sports programs and needed field maintenance. I served on the steering committee that developed what is now the San Bruno Education Foundation. Last year, I joined a debate that proposed closing the school in San Bruno to support the families. In August last year, I joined the team that developed El Crystal School into a magnet school for STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, a new curriculum that started this fall.
I have a one-year-old, and it's more important now to me, education, than it ever has been in my life. And I never understood really why there was such a disconnect between the school district, board, and the city. What, what was the cause of that friction and unwillingness to work together? It just seems like that's something that, that has been going on for a while. So I think with the change in, in some of the members, and a new attitude, and a new feeling of wanting to work together, and sharing services, being able to do more work together, so that we have more money to spend in the classroom, because that's where it's going to happen. It's got to happen in the classroom. And we need, we need to do more, and we have, we have to figure out a way to do it.
Well, as a follow-up on that, somebody asked about the progress of shared services with the fire department. Is that something that's going on now? I'm not familiar with the city. Is that a proposal? I, I can't tell from the question. Does one of you want to take that?
We'll let the standing members answer me first.
Yeah.
Okay. Ken, do you want to go ahead?
Okay, I'll be, I, I believe, and I'm going to clarify some, in case I'm wrong, that maybe we're talking about fired administrative shared services.
Okay, it doesn't say that, so I, I couldn't tell.
So I'm going to go, assuming that that is the question. So currently, the City of San Bruno, along with the City of Milbrae, and Central, which is Hillsborough, and Burlingame, have a partnership when it comes to administrative shared services. And that was done primarily in order to reduce upper management, those are the gentlemen with the, and ladies with the gold badge, save money to each one of the communities, provide a better sense of service when we talk about working together collaboratively, when it talks about overtime at the stations, and when it talks about ordering, buying supplies, and providing for the three agencies in the four cities combined. And I think it has been thus far effective, and is proving to be a good pilot program, and I think there's but good things to follow with it.
I think it's a good trend to share services.
Put your microphone up, I think it'll be easier.
I believe it's a good trend to, to share services in, in any capacity that we can to eliminate duplication of services. We've done it at Park and Rec, we've done it at the police station, and currently, we're working on consolidate services for the fire department. As long, and, and this is the main thing, as long as the residents are, feel that there is no change in, in reaction time, as long as they feel safe, and I believe that is, that is the main concern. We have too many, we have too many fire departments, too many agencies throughout this 20 city-county, and I believe there is room to consolidate and save money, taxpayer money.
Do either of the other two want to comment on that, or not?
Sure.
No, go ahead, Marty.
Thanks. I grew up in Salinas, California, and from Salinas, there's another city maybe 18 miles away, there's another city 14 miles away. Everybody has their own fire department, and that makes sense to me. So when I first got here into San Bruno, like, 12 years ago, it was like, Milbrae has their own, Daly City has their own, every, every little city has their own little fire department, police department, city manager, city engineer. They have to work together, because at the top, the people at the top make the most. And you can't have that much money sitting at the top, because they can't all put out fires, they can't all catch the bad guys. So we have to
So we have to find ways to, to, to take this whole community and work together like this. When there's a big fire, everybody responds, right? We have mutual aid agreements. So we just have to keep on pushing and pushing to make sure that we can do that and we have to work with our unions to make sure that we're going to, we're going to keep the jobs, but we have to increase our security.
Great segue, Marty. I, I'm originally from Martinez, California, a refinery town, a shale oil town, and the fire department, it, they hold a lot of the keys because of refinery fires. So the relationship between the city, the, the citizens, the city management and the fire department is very close and I, I think it's a good thing. I think San Bruno does that well. Again, like what Marty was saying, the management at the top, I think there's a lot of extra money up there and I think that you do need to make some efficiencies and service agreements, you got to look at those and see, yeah, we are small peninsula towns, so how can we share resources to, you know, drive down costs? So it's, it's a beginning of, of a conversation and I think us as a society, us as San Bruno residents should have that. Thank you.
Thank you. An issue's been raised that we haven't talked about at all yet, crime in San Bruno. And if you would like to address this, what the situation is, do you, are you comfortable with it? Is it high, low, or whatever, and what, what your knowledge is regarding recent crime issues?
The, the issues with crime, I think that as the median home prices go up and people focus more on, okay, the peninsula's, there's an expression, you know, rising tide lifts all boats. And I think that it goes back to education, it goes back to having good local jobs. And I think that you can influence people in positive ways instead of punitive measures. And I think that, that's my vision for San Bruno is that we, we develop areas of skillsets which we already have, proximities to great industries, and a buoyant housing market. I mean, people are going to move here and they're going to make their communities better and their schools better. And I think that there's a lot of love in this town and I think that we can form bonds and work on those things.
I, I think the question, which I'd like the others of you to address, is, is what's the situation now? Is this a, a recent problem? Is it a problem? Have you had a problem regarding crime in this city? That's what I took this for. Would you like to go with that one?
There was a report on San Bruno Patch. San Bruno Patch is one of the local websites and they had, they had a report. And I believe it was from the FBI and it was based on two thousand and twelve data and the, the, the crime for burglary was up eighteen percent in San Bruno. Now, I haven't had any problems, you know, in my neighborhood. I feel safe in San Bruno. I believe the police are doing a good job, but when it came down to getting data from the FBI, we have to look into it and our chief of police did respond to the four questions I had there. So it seemed to seem to me that he mentioned there was a peak and now things are back to normal. But nothing's ever normal if it's your house that gets burglarized. Nothing's normal when somebody breaks into your car. So we have to find a way and we rely on our police chief to give us the information to do that.
Go ahead.
We, we have a low crime rate and in respect to the, to the report from the patch, it was from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, it was actually reported a double-digit increase of seventeen percent in robberies and it went from eighteen to twenty-seven. So unfortunately, there were nine more robberies and that translates to seventeen percent increase. I'm proud of the police department and I know we provide a high level of service with a limited staff. I know that we are proactive, following on, following up on potential trends, crime trends, such as car robberies at a regional shopping center and solicitor scams that we've heard about in our neighborhoods. We have artichoke Joes, an element that most people don't, aren't, aren't really liking, but it's gambling. But they have taken care, they have a history of taking care of their, their own and low crime rates there. We have an actual involvement in the regional gang task force of San Mateo County and we have curbed gang, gang activities.
Rico?
I would say nobody's happy with any crime in their community and we have trends. And sometimes it's vehicle. In this case, is, it was just indicated there was an increase in burglary by nine. I don't believe that they're doing a good job and our police officers, I know they are, that's why I go to briefings, that's why I do ride-alongs, I try to keep engaged and be out there in the community so I myself can hear and see for firsthand what is going on. The city council approved in this budget cycle an enhancement to bring back a position, the crime prevention officer, so we could have more outreach to the community and be proactive to these type of situations.
We have a number of questions here around the economic situation in San Bruno. One person is asking how you prepare for the next proposed budget, how will losing the redevelopment funds affect San Bruno? What's your plan for San Bruno's economic development? What new ideas or programs would you propose? And I kind of put those all together to see where you see the city going economically and, and what harm has happened because of the redevelopment funds being taken away.
I, I think definitely.
Maybe we could let somebody else start that would like to. Marty, do you want to start?
I'll be right after, Ken. Okay. Economic development, it's, it is a, it's a popular issue, especially during these campaigns and people have a lot of great, great ideas. We've been planning for economic development for the last seventeen years. We got redevelopment, we lost redevelopment. We, we approved and adopted a transit corridors plan, which is a specific plan that allows develop, potential developers and our city staff to attract businesses to build and bring business and, and types of businesses to our area. You can't say that you're going to invite businesses to come to a city. You can do that all you want, but unless you give them an opportunity, unless, until you give them a plan to develop, unless you give them some incentives, that's the only way you're going to call, you're going to bring on economic development. And I believe we're well positioned to do that in San Bruno.
Okay, anybody else?
The transit corridor plan, I'm sorry. The transit corridor plan is huge for San Bruno. It's, it allows businesses and higher-density housing to be in the area from Crystal Springs over to where the new train station's going to be. From my understanding, things are slowly picking up in San Bruno. I believe I read where the unemployment rate is, is down to around five percent. But I know in downtown, downtown's, downtown's struggling still and we have to find ways as a city to encourage new businesses to start. And one way to do that is to delay the permit fees, make them, make the business, allow the businesses to start up and they could pay as they go along because it's all about cash flow when you're starting a business, trying to make sure that you have enough money to hire somebody to, to get, to get, to get, to get your name out.
Yeah, we've mentioned the transit corridor plan with the great separation and then waiting for that to bring forward business to the community. Redevelopment was a great success and you see Jack's Restaurant and that outlet right there is one example of it and that was working together. The hotel, building the hotel will obviously bring TOT tax to us, not just today, but for the future. Our sales tax is up higher than it was. Our TOT tax is up higher than it was. Has to do with the more vibrant economy and we're blessed at this time, but also we have to remember as a mentioned budget, the city is required a balanced budget each and every time. The, this council has done that and in emergency reserves, when I got into office, they were very low and we have doubled those. So we are planning for the future, we balance the budget and we try to make and do the best we can to invite business.
Andrew?
Fantastic. I believe the transit corridor is definitely where we're headed, obviously. And my goals, if I was elected, would be to focus on definitely clean energy and biotech. So whereas South San Francisco's been very successful based on their landmass east of the freeway, I think San Bruno still has some opportunities to have like small laboratories, small, clean, low emissions businesses. And I think that we could focus those efforts as far as zoning goes around those sorts of businesses. Marty mentioned a good point about, you know, downtown and San Mateo Avenue and in, in talking to folks this week, it's the simple things, like trees, like people focus on, say, San Mateo, like the downtown has a lot of trees, Redwood City has a lot of trees in the downtown area. And I think this, like mild beautification efforts are really going to bring in, make that area hot again and I think that's, that's core. Thank you.
You all have touched on this idea of your vision of downtown with the corridor and the hotels and the other things. Somebody said, how do you know what's best for the people that live or own businesses here? Do you assess what people want or people coming in or how is that dealt with here?
It's, that's a great question. I know in talking to the neighbors, my wife and I live off Cherry Avenue and a lot of folks talk about how small businesses, it's not so much the Walmart dot com, it's so much, it's, hey, what about San Mateo Avenue? And what about small, say like plumbers, pipe fitters, electricians? The trades that are in this area, we need to protect those, those trades and utilize them. So if you're doing, say, redevelopment to a school or additions or whatnot, use local tradesmen. I think that you've got to, you've got to look after your own in some way and I think it's really critical, for sure.
So how do the rest of you know what's best for the people here and the businesses here?
I'm not going to say everything is, everything that we come out is perfect because everybody has their own opinion and you can't please everybody. But however, how do you find out? How do you know? You pound the pavement, you knock on the doors, you ask the people. It's great on San Mateo Avenue when the former pawn shop is an ice cream place, when the hub is now a bakery and being there cutting the ribbon for Nicole who lives in San Francisco and decided to open up her business on San Mateo Avenue. Those are the differences that we should encourage, being engaged with the chamber, being at events and not doing it just now, but doing it every year, every time, irregardless so that you do have your ear to the ground and you know what the people's desires and needs are.
I'll piggyback on that. Someone told me, asked me seventeen years ago when I came on this council, why don't you bring Starbucks to San Bruno? Nineteen ninety-six, we didn't have a Starbucks. Now we have six. So Starbucks has recognized that there is, there is potential in our downtown and in San Bruno. We provided potential, even though we didn't invest a lot of money, we spent three-quarters of a million dollars right away in, in, on San Mateo Avenue. We provided additional parking, we provided better lighting and we provided, we've replaced the trees. There are some major infrastructure problems in San Mateo Avenue that's going to take a lot of investment. Question is, do we invest in it? Do we, do we ask, do we ask the, the business owners to, you know, to contribute to that? But we have to provide essential services for our residents, we have to provide housing close to those essential services so they don't get in their cars and travel to the shopping centers all the time or to the, to the other cities. They need to stay home and be able to have services close to home.
Okay. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize.
Please.
Well, the free market decides, but we have to do things in San Bruno, if we're really going to talk about San Mateo Avenue, things that are directly going to affect the people there, the businesses there. And we have to cut the red tape, when a business wants to start, how quickly can they get into that building and start doing their thing that they do best? It's not for us to dictate as a city, it's what the free market's going to do. It's going to allow the individual to go ahead and use their enterprise skills and figure that out. But we need to provide low permit fees and we can't continually increase our water and our sewer rate. That will drive businesses away from here. It's going to drive seniors away from here, it's going to drive everybody away from here. We have to control these things, we need to have clean streets, cleaner than they are now, and we have to have a, a full sense of security and safety. When you walk down the street at night, you don't have to be clutching at your purse or your wallet. Thank you.
Okay. At the moment, what is the most important issue in the city of San Bruno that you feel?
Utilities.
You're going to pick one thing? Okay, utilities.
Yeah, utilities, absolutely.
Okay, what about you?
Picking one thing right now, it is finishing up the seventy million dollar settlement because that has to be done this month as far as appointing a board of the eighty-two applicants that have come forward. So for this month right now, that is the most pressing issue to get that done, meet the state standard and get that process begun.
Okay, Ken?
I'm going to agree with who said, with what's been said, but I also believe that implementing the transit quarters plan and getting, getting started up on, on economic development, we did take a little break because of a recession and because of losing redevelopment and so we, we do have projects that are coming back. The, the recovery is clear right now. We know for a fact that there is a new buyer at the theater building, so there's going to be development at the south end of San Mateo Avenue. We have interest in a, in a, in an abandoned bank building at Huntington and San Bruno Avenue. There is a lot of projects that got stalled because of the recession and because of redevelopment, the loss of redevelopment and they're coming back right now. So it's very good news coming and it's, it is hot news that is very recent, too.
Okay, and your big issue?
My number one issue is the utility rates. People I speak with, they are having trouble figuring out how they're going to pay their water bill. I've heard other people saying the second highest bill they have, other than their mortgage, is their utility bill. It averages approximately one hundred dollars per adult, per every two months. So a family of four, your water bill's going to be four hundred dollars, water, sewer, garbage combined, it'll be four hundred dollars. So we have to figure out how to reduce it and we can. It's on my website, martymedinaforSanBrunoCityCouncil2013.com. I have a rough outline of a plan and I'd be more than happy to speak to you about it and that's the number one issue I'm seeing. Close is always security. That's always the number one thing, but what the issue out there that the people are feeling that are struggling with is, is, is the utility rates.
It seems like this is a major issue for those in the audience as well and just as a follow-up on this, another one on that same issue is, is how do you propose to collect that six hundred thousand dollars plus an unpaid fees that hasn't already been done? And I know some of you alluded to it, but do you want to, as succinctly as you can, again, repeat, how you would get this money paid? I know you mentioned about the different sized pipes and this sort of thing, but is that going to take care of, of this big concern that everybody has? I don't know. Somebody said, how do you propose to collect the six hundred thousand plus unpaid fees that isn't already done? Okay?
I'll take that one.
Okay.
It's my understanding that those, those fees are written off, they're gone, they're not coming back. I find it still irresponsible to think that allowing ninety-nine percent of your bill to be paid and not collecting that one percent and thinking, hey, it's a, it's a government standard, that's irresponsible. It's still six hundred thousand dollars. Six hundred thousand dollars is less than, six hundred thousand dollars is half of the utility rate increase for everybody in San Bruno for gar, for sewer for one year. So you, you, we have to do something different about that. How do we do it? Well, I have a simple idea. Actually, the city of San Jose is doing it. They go ahead and they're putting the, the water sewer bills on the, on your taxes. Okay? So you don't need to collect them anymore, you have to send, or the city doesn't have to collect them anymore, you send them in. You can require a larger deposit by the property owner who's renting out the property and that's, the renters are those that are leaving San Bruno. It's not property owners leaving, at least not yet.
Okay, Ken?
We're talking about a service that produces twelve, twelve million dollars in revenue every year. So over five years, that's sixty million dollars and we're talking about a three hundred thousand dollar write-off. Well, as, as Rico said, that's less than one percent and you'd be hard-pressed to go out into the corporate world, the business world and, and not see that there are unpaid bills. There are write-offs. Now, maybe we can work a little harder, but that's going to cost money. We're going to have to change some policies that possibly we, we can only have a property owner take out, take out services instead of a renter. But do you really want to put your utility bill on your property tax? Do you want to pay six months of rates on your, on your utility bill, on, on your, on your property tax bill? I don't think so.
The other thing that we certainly as an option was given, giving it to the county. So the county now collects, they get the delinquencies. The delinquencies and penalties that the city of San Bruno collects go to support and fund the low, low income for residents that cannot afford it. We would lose that opportunity. And do you think the county's going to do it for free? I don't think so. Nobody does anything for free. So I think before we jump to that, it needs to be looked into, look at the values and the benefits, but also we don't want to hurt. We have to make people sense, too. And we have people in this community that need payment plans and our staff works with them. And when they have issues, they can call the council, they can call staff, and try to get some resolve to those. And again, it is not a government one percent. It is the standard industry for utilities.
Andrew?
Uh, thank you. So I can't really speak to the six hundred numbers. Six hundred thousand?
Well, that's what was here.
Okay. What I will say is this, I, besides working in the sciences, I worked in landscaping. So since I was a young man, I did a variety of landscaping chores, um, for neighbors and whatnot. I also worked for a contractor, and we used to mow lawns and trim hedges for, you know, industrial apartment complexes in the East Bay. And my issue is that conservation is on one edge of the platform, obviously. Because we do need to, we do need to lose, use less waters as society. And water's going to become more and more of a commodity as time goes on, obviously. But when you see the neighbors with the dead lawns, and you go, yeah, they don't want to, they don't want to pay to keep their lawn green in the summertime. And then you see, you go to the city park, and yeah, the city park's beautiful. And yes, we love going there, and I love taking my son there. But at some point, we need to go, you don't need to water a hedge. Thank you, I guess I'm done. You don't need to water a hedge that often, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. We're going to switch gears here. And somebody asked, what programs for our youth appear in the future of San Bruno?
Youth programs?
Mm-hmm. Let somebody else start here.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Rico, why don't you start?
As far as the youth programs in the city, I think we have great programs and activities that are done by a lot of volunteers, from soccer to baseball to softball. We have after-school sports at the school sites, the park site intermediate, which the city has taken over. We have daycare programs that the city also helps in coordination with grants and the school district. So to me, we are blessed in this town that we've always had strength as far as our volunteers and as far as our programs and outreach. So to me, the volunteers are doing the job, and we're always open to any new ideas. But I'll tell you also, as we well know, programs take money, and we need to be able to balance the budget as well. But I think we're blessed with the representatives and the, and the volunteers we have on the programs that are offered.
Okay.
For at least the last fifteen years, we've, we've revamped our, our park and recreation programs. And we've listened to our customers, the residents. Youth, youth programs are diversified now. We, we have some of the best after-school sports programs. We have youth that come from neighboring cities just to participate in our programs. We have, from all ages, we have implemented programs at our schools and partnered with the schools so that the kids don't have to come to one facility. I'm very proud of the fact that we have youth service organizations. We have a youth activity council out of the Park and Rec Commission, Park and Rec Program, that allows youth to do service, service projects. And we have LEO clubs and, I believe, Rotary Clubs that, that come out of the middle schools and the high schools to do community service. So I think we're well represented for the youth, but we're always growing.
Okay. Andrew?
Absolutely. I can't agree more. I think San Bruno, this is like one of the shining examples of, of youth involvement and community involvement. I know Marty coaches. I know Ken Ibarra's a volunteer. I think these are great people in society, for sure. And I think we should be proud to live in San Bruno because of all the great youth programs. I'd like to geek out and make it more science-based, because I think we need to advance as a society. We need to capture, yeah, three months of summertime, that's great, but you should hit the books every now and then, just to stay, stay on top of things. So, again, I just have nothing bad to say about the youth programs. I think they're fantastic. I think they should be funded and whatnot. So, thank you.
San Bruno probably has one of the best programs in, in the whole area. When I was coaching baseball, starting in two thousand, like, two thousand and ten, San Bruno's a powerhouse. I mean, in pretty much all sports, soccer, baseball, it doesn't matter. The girls' soccer, or girls' soccer and girls' softball, incredible, champions come out of San Bruno. So there's tons of pride in this city. And I, and with the one-year-old, I can't wait for my boy to get to play baseball and to move himself up, get, get over from City Park, then go over to Bel Air Field, and go over to the larger field, and then come back to Lara Field. I mean, it, it is incredible. And we've got San Bruno Giants that have been here for the last couple of years. And I'm just learning about that, and it is an incredible, incredible program. I love baseball the most. That's just how I am. I, I don't play soccer, but I, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Now, do any of you have any new ideas for new programs? Who wants to start on that? All they want to know is new ideas for new programs in the city. I guess that would be under the tutelage of the council, I'm assuming. But that's what's there. Does anybody want to take a stab at that?
May I start?
You may.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier, I think science-based educational programs. I think these could be low-cost. I'm not talking a, a big, like, bond measure. We need to, you know, increase class size or, you know, whatnot. I'm just saying, we need to worry about where we're going to be as a society as far as science goes and science education and industry, and relating education to directly to what the jobs are out there and the jobs that we want in this area. And I think that, it's on my postcard here, science-based education. I'm really proud of this. I'm really proud of these programs. And whether I'm elected or not, I will definitely get in and bring my colleagues to public schools and create those sort of situations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who else has a new idea?
We need stronger relationships with, with some of these great companies that are coming to San Bruno. Everyone knows about YouTube. We need to collaborate with YouTube and see what's their success and say, okay, San Bruno's involved with YouTube, and how can we spark interest in our, in our community to, you know, to do videos, to do that type of twenty-first century technology and things. We have, we have, we have a college. We have Skyline College up on the hill. It's, it's like a diamond in the rough. We need to collaborate with them and do more things. They've done so many improvements up there at the college that we, you know, we, we just have so many things that we can do with, with those students and, and with the facilities up there. We have two high schools, Peninsula High School and Cappuccino High School. Cappuccino is one of the, another diamond in the rough. We've made so many, millions of dollars in improvements. They have an IB program. We need to collaborate with those students, you know, and get them more involved in government.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Medina, go ahead.
We'll just say Rico, I think, like, we're talking in third person. I think the collaboration between what we have here today, which is the junior college was mentioned, the high schools and the programs that they have. I think it's also the synthetic field that we dedicated not too long ago is there, with Park and Lou fees. We now should build upon the programs and activities that can go year-round. So we have activities for both youth and adults. And again, the way the field was conformed, it's not just for softball, adult softball, or teen baseball anymore. It's for a multi-use program and activity which can not only provide opportunity, but may also provide revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Medina.
Have you all had a chance?
I'm ready now.
Okay.
Mr. Medina. I got this kind of crazy dream, because utilities is my thing, sewer, water, sidewalk, streets. And I've been thinking, well, you know what? We've got these veterans. They come back from overseas. They don't got a job. They know how to protect. They know how to shoot. Why can't we have an apprentice program in San Bruno? We have lots of sidewalks that need to be repaired. So let's get together with one of our congressmen or find some, some way. And I haven't been able to put this all together because I'm running this campaign, I'm raising a kid, I'm working. But basically, the idea would be that for eighteen months, a veteran would come to San Bruno. They learn how to pour sidewalk, fix a sewer, to put in a, a water main. And we would get the government to help us pay for that. And we would just do that and churn out these veterans that could go to all these other cities. And we would be able to get more done, cheaper rates, lower utility rates. It could happen.
So we had some interesting new ideas. And I think probably the last question before you have your sum up is, somebody would like, and I bet everybody would like to know, tell me why I should vote for you.
I'm ready.
Want to do that one? Okay.
I'll tell you exactly why you need to vote for me. We got one minute for this?
You got one minute.
Okay. We need to lower our utility rates. And I'm going to find out some way to do it. And we can do it. We just have to start doing things differently. We need to be able to consider, let's buy our own PVC pipe, and let's go ahead and stockpile it. And when the contractor comes in, we'll say, hey, yeah, you put the bid in to install this pipe. You don't need to buy the pipe. You'll go ahead and, and be able to free up your cash, and it'll be sitting here. And when you're ready to go, there it is. I am going to work relentlessly to prove to everybody here that we can lower our water and sewer bills. It is possible. It is within our grasp. We cannot continue doing the same thing. That's all we do here. We're not doing enough. Yeah, we're doing some work, but we're not doing enough. We're not keeping up. We're falling behind. We got fined. We have to do something differently.
Okay, Ken?
Not take any full credit for what we've done in the city. And I take exception to the fact that we haven't done enough and we haven't done, you know, things. For seventeen years, I've been on a council that has worked together and gotten things done. We have addressed the tough issues. We have raised rates. We raised rates in nineteen ninety-eight. And we called a hearing at, at a Bel Air school, and no one showed up. All of a sudden, there's this, you know, big concern about high rates. Well, how are we going to fix this city? How are we going to fix the city? We're going to buy PVC pipe? Well, I did a little research on PVC pipe. Your iron pipe is eight times, has eight more issues that are better than PVC. PVC is not a safe product. So when you say that you're going to rate, lower rates, when the challengers say they're going to lower rates, you haven't given a reason, you haven't given a plan on how to lower rates.
Okay. Rico?
I believe very firmly that actions speak louder than words, and I've been that. And that means even if it's a chagrin sometimes of staff, where it means I'm going down and checking out the vehicles that are being asked to be replaced, I do that. I take balancing the budget serious, and I take it as if it were my own money. And I understand times are tough. I experienced that myself. I went through a time of losing a job and wondering, how do you pay the bills? And I understand that my grandmother always taught me, if it wasn't for Prop thirteen, I wouldn't be able to live in my home. So I get what people go through. I'm one of those folks that gets up every morning, Monday through Friday, reports to work, and comes with the passion and the commitment that I've shown to this community ever since I was in high school and belonged to some kind of an activity or program or board to make a difference in this town. I've done it then, I do it now, and I'm committed to do it in the future.
Okay. Andrew?
Great. So essentially, what I offer is something different. So like Marty, yes, I'm focused on utilities. I'm focused on keeping those costs low for elderly populations, for people on fixed incomes, for pretty much everybody. This four hundred dollars for water, sewer, garbage, the whole kit and caboodle is, is way too much. It's taxing the middle class. The way we go about that is mature conversations about conservation, about material usage. We could talk about pipes and whatnot and, and labors and man-hours and whatnot. But let's curb the utilities costs. Please, let's just stop the bleeding. Two, what I have is an industry perspective. So a lot of people have public sector experience. They, they might have served on boards and city councils for a long time. What I offer is fourteen, fifteen years of laboratory, of research, of drug development. And I've worked on oncology drugs that have really helped out, you know, an aging population in this country. And I'm proud of that work. And what, okay, education, that's what I'm going to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. So well behaved. Okay, we're going to bring our question period to a close now. And I'm sure afterwards, the candidates would probably be around for a bit if something didn't get answered. I covered most of them, tried to combine them, and there's a few we didn't get to. But we have promised to be done in ten minutes. So now we're going to do our sum up. And as I mentioned, each of the candidates will have two minutes. And are you going to give them, what, a thirty-second? A thirty-second, okay. So after thirty seconds, I mean, after a minute and a half, Gene will let them know that they have thirty seconds to finish. And as I mentioned, we're going to reverse what we started with. So this time, we are going to start with Ken, who will be our first person to speak.
I want to thank the city and League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's event. And thank you to those attending, those watch, the thousands watching on TV. For as long as I've lived in San Bruno, there is one incident that stands out. I cannot and will never forget what happened on Thursday, September ninth, two thousand and ten. A tragedy that has affected all of us. I still cannot imagine how our victims have coped and endured. However, I will continue to do everything possible to assist and support the recovery, no matter how long it takes. The tragedy put everything into a clearer perspective, especially as an elected official and public servant. We were able to briefly set aside the agendas of running a city and focus on a more sensitive and humanitarian agenda, an agenda of healing. No matter what, I will always remember how community and region came together to help. We are elected to take care of our residences, residents and businesses. And sometimes we are tasked to go above and beyond our job descriptions. We do what's right. We do what's best. At the very least, the city council should provide necessary services, safe conditions, up-to-date facilities and programs, and amenities for people to enjoy themselves. This has always been my focus as your councilman. It has been a long journey, but a rewarding one. San Bruno is a place we can all be proud of. There is still work to do, and I know what it takes. I have helped plan for the next chapter, the next hundred years of San Bruno. I ask that you elect the right person. I ask that you re-elect Ken Ibarra for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Rico?
I also want to thank the League of Women Voters, Andrew, Ken, and Marty, and the audience here. You know, we're coming up on our one-hundredth anniversary, as was said earlier, next year, December twenty-third. San Bruno will be one hundred years. And I think through every time, you never know what tomorrow may bring. You can campaign, but again, proven leadership is important. And as was indicated earlier, we had, we've had some challenging times, from economic challenges and trying to balance the budget, to dealing with a disaster in this town that we nobody could have thought or even envisioned. And I remember having to go to and choosing to take a week off work and be at the National Transportation Safety Board to represent this community, to be the eyes, ears, and voice once again, to ensure that what happened here doesn't happen anywhere. And these are times that no one can plan for, but again, it's what tests a community. It shows the leadership of who you have elected. And I believe I have been that person that has stood very firm, very strong, and with passion and conviction for this community that I've called home my entire life. I've been honored and privileged and been blessed by the people through this town who have helped me along the way to be who I am and who you see before you. I believe my passion and commitment is strong, and I am prepared and wishing your support and vote for the next four years as your city council member to represent you.
Thank you. Marty?
Want to thank everybody for attending. And I want to thank Andrew Mason for his hard work, because he and I know what it's like to run against some long-seated incumbents. And I want to thank the council members here for their years of service. It is noble work. The key issue in this election, though, is to decide whether to continue with the incumbents or move forward with new, fresh energy, vision, and experience to lead our city forward for the next four years. Has the council been provided with enough time to properly manage and provide the basic city services? For Councilman Medina, is eight years enough? For Councilman Ibarra, is seventeen years enough? I believe the answer is yes. I kindly remind you that there are two council seats available. And after examining the facts, the fines, the fees, the lost rent of revenue, and your utility bills, which will increase another ten percent for three more years, I hope you agree with me it's time for new leadership. Our city council needs to have a balanced mix of members with various work experience backgrounds and skill sets. San Bruno's capital improvement program budgets an average of twenty million a year for the next five years. We have to stretch our dollar as far as
twenty million a year for the next five years. We have to stretch our dollar as far as it can go without breaking the banks of our residents. We must control our utility rates before they become the highest in the Bay Area and drive seniors and low-income residents away. For more information about my campaign, please email me at sanbrunotruth@gmail.com or at my website, martymedinaforSanBrunoCityCouncil2013.com, or you can call me, six-five-zero-seven-four-one-one-zero-five-five. I am on your side. I will be there for you. I won't let you down. Thank you very much, and good night.
Andrew?
Hello. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters and to all you folks for sitting out here and talking, listening to us talk. I'd like to thank the council, especially to thank Marty. He and I have sat, and we've had deep conversations about our visions for San Bruno, where we align, and where we wanna have a conversation. And I think my goal is to change the conversation in San Bruno, not to obliterate it, not to alter it entirely. I'm just saying, another voice. Because my coworkers, and several of them live in my neighborhood, we always talk about San Bruno because we love the parks. We love San Bruno Park. We love the, you know, all the programs that this city offers, and we think it's a beautiful town. But we also wanna be represented in the council. So, by voting for me, what you're doing is changing the conversation. You're allowing somebody else to get in there that hasn't really had a voice in city council politics, somebody with an industry background, somebody with biotech, with a science mindset, someone that can make these decisions based on the years of experience in those fields. In addition, I think the middle class in this country and in San Bruno is really in a perilous situation, because we can talk about utilities all day, and I think that that's a critical conversation piece. And we need to keep costs low for residents, people on a fixed income. I mean, where are they gonna get the money, that four hundred bucks a month? And finally, education. What drives median home prices in your community is the schools. People look at public schools and say, "I wanna move there," because those public schools are superior. That's a game changer, and I think that's a beautiful thing that San Bruno offers, is we've got a beautiful town. It's got great history, but let's work on schools. Let's keep utility costs low. Thank you very much.
Well, I think we should certainly thank the candidates. And I would like to thank Bonnie for helping out, and Jean, who was pulling those signs up and down. She got good shoulder exercise, and Mary, who helped put the things together. So, I wanna bid you good night and tell you to vote as you please, but please vote November fifth, okay? Thank you very much.